Forty six o'clock. This big day returns, we ready to go Blake?
Last final moments of ultimate power. You got a different hairstyle there, madam.
I just.
Looks good. A good day. Call the meeting to order at six oh, six P M. August eighteenth, two thousand twenty one.
United States of America, and due to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with their duty of justice for all.
Councilmember Iris. Councilmember Lukeyzi. Councilmember Kaiser. And Councilmember Deutsch. And Mayor Brian.
Now under our general public comment for the evening, if anyone attending, I would like to make a general public comment on city affairs. Please either come to the podium or raise your hand, you're on Zoom. You'll be allowed three minutes. I will give you a thirty second warning so you're not cut off abruptly. And please state your name and address for the record. This is for general public comments, so items on the agenda subsequent to this will have their own public comments period. I see none in the room, no hand raised on Zoom. So we'll close general public comment for this evening. Proceed with council staff comments. City manager Max.
Right, thank you so much. Just two reports, the Amtrak station, we had a pre-construction meeting for that, so just heads up that the Amtrak station will be getting a refurb. So that's exciting. The contractor is a company called Centennial, I believe, so if that matters to anybody. The other note was that I did get a notice from Mr. Juarez, the owner of the Landmark Theater, and he just wanted to potentially provide some feedback commentary to the landmarking status of the theater. So I had an email, I was gonna read it, I haven't read it yet. But I did want to, I did tell him that I was going to publicly make this statement, that he just wanted to reach out to you guys, so I will be sending along if anything.
Question.
On that point, yeah.
Without getting into details, does it sound like he's willing to work with it or not?
See, he does not want the landmarking status to happen. He did mention that, but we'll get into the details later at any point. And that is all I have. There is the rail yard tour, I just want to mention that, August twenty second, four P M.
One thing I had a concern about that is. Brown Act, can we all go over there at one time?
I will not be there, so.
Me neither, we cannot deliberate city business, you're allowed to go on first.
Don't make, don't make any decisions while you're there.
Informative things to learn things about.
Oh yeah, I just want to make sure we do it right, so.
Yeah, so any decision made about that would have to take place at public meeting.
Yeah, no, don't discuss any official city business down there. But learn about the rail yard cleanup project.
What time is that?
Four P M.
Twenty second.
Four P M, twenty second.
Do we have any idea if they're planning on getting rid of the rail yard in general, or is it still gonna be a rail yard?
It will still serve as a rail yard from my understanding of the project. It actually sounds like they might be keeping the building and replacing the building that we currently rent out, but I, they weren't sure if they were gonna rent it back to us. But they won't be impacting the major operation of the rail yard itself, it'll be, it'll be on the periphery along the riverbed.
Well, I'm just gonna have this dialogue for the benefit of everybody. What, what is the timeline for the upgrade of the Amtrak station, do we know?
Generally, they're gonna start mid-September, mid-October.
This year.
This year. This year, so a lot of the planning engineers have been done, so this is actually the construction, they've awarded the construction. In the preliminary talks, we did mention that there is this thing called the winter up here, so that we're gonna do a lot of concrete work. We said that may not be a great idea, so they're actually thinking of revamping. So bottom line is, potentially at this point, it's the interior section of the Amtrak station in September, October, probably, you know, into the winter time. And then it's a two-phase of the north part of the actual, so the platform, concrete will be all redone and nice and the north section, so essentially from the like depot building north, and then the southern section.
Is like turned into a pumpkin, so we have two projects going on. One is the remediation project. Uni-Pacific EPA and state regulators for this area right out here, we have the renovation of the Amtrak terminal with the notion for Dunsmere, it's a huge potential to have that evolve into an attractive area in the heart of our downtown next to the river. So I, I hope in the name of communication, we'll start to form vision around what we want to see. The other is on the landmarking, resolution twenty twenty-two sixteen, did it go to the city attorney for review and is it finalized?
It has been sent to the city attorney, we have not heard word back yet. I'm looking at Wendy, but.
I, I would like a copy when it's finished, obviously it's going to be very important, especially if the building owner is not in the camp.
Well, yeah, maybe I realized hadn't been fully reviewed yet, but I did have the owner signing.
Right, yeah. Mayor, Mayor Brian. The version that you sign actually had to be revised.
Yes.
Since you've signed it, I spoke, I spoken to the assessor and he suggested we put the the description, you know, the legal, the legal description in there. And then I believe Councilmember Lukeyzi changed some language in it to say that the city clerk would be doing the recording and not the property owner.
I just wanted to throw out there, you're talking about dreaming about the downtown, the reason I asked about the railroad and whether they're gonna keep the yard up is, I just drove by there a couple few days ago and it struck me, that'd be a great place for parking. I'm just, you know, just throwing it out there for the gods or whatever to hear, but anyway, that's all.
Back to this case statement about, you said they're trying to build a building and then bring it back to us.
No, so it was back at the presentation from C D F W at our last meeting, he did mention that the rail yard's now considering erecting their own building and the footprint of that one. But I don't know what the intent of the purpose of that building is.
Then that leads me to my question, where is that meeting? Are we still looking for, are we gonna change our whole?
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
You still have to find out.
Yeah, well. There'll be a item that comes back to us council many times. Sergeant Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So the sheriff's office. So I've got those sunglasses, but the sheriff's office provided four hundred and forty-six hours of law enforcement service month of July. Eight percent of the fiscal years complete, point zero eight four percent of the contracted hours have been completed. We did have some challenges last month, as I spoke at the last council meeting with the fires, that did not affect our staff and members for the city of Dunsmere. It wasn't the slightest bit.
Great job.
Everybody really stepped up, the bellyache was to a minimum. Everybody's getting a lot of it, but the city didn't feel that effect whatsoever with fires. We had a hundred and ninety-three calls for service or self-initiated activity, they're combined. That's up last year, from last year's a hundred and seventy-five. We took eighteen cases, which is down from twenty last year. I conducted fifteen traffic stops, last year we had twelve. We had eight arrests and two citations issued, one of them was a traffic citation and then one of them was a misdemeanor that sided roads. Of the eighteen cases, we did take two of them were in regards to, been involved fifty-one fifty. Six of them were based on public intoxication incidents. We have one incident, incident of somebody brandishing a golf club. We had two drug-related cases. Heroin, heroin and meth were recovered out of a vehicle after one of the traffic stops, and then the other was another traffic stop or a glass smoking device. The meth and heroin was user problems, there's nothing that indicated sales. We took a missing juvenile runaway case, she's since been located safe and sound. We took two stolen vehicles, one of them was on Orange Street, one of them was on the fifty-eight hundred block of Sacramento Avenue. The, the, both of these were recovered the next day, which was intact, not burnt on fire and trapped, as far as I know. We did store a vehicle off the Chast Avenue that was abandoned or left sitting there for weeks. The sewer pipe was coming in, so we got it out of there.
It was on Chast Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so, right next to my place, I mean, I saw you guys out there.
Was that your car?
No, no, no.
We had a vandalism on Rover Street. Some porcelain wound up with paint on their vehicle, there were no leads on that. We did have a notable incident this month, but there was a house fire, August seventh on the fifty-nine hundred block of Chast Avenue and Deputy Keith Foster, again with the fires, he's the one that solved the arson and successfully, which led to a successful prosecution of the arson. He actually saved this lady's life, there's a duplex unit. The dispatch was sent out that there was smoke coming from a building, a potential house fire. When Sergeant Stock and Deputy Foster arrived, they could see smoke going out of the building. They could see a lady in there from the front window, sitting in a chair incapacitated or knocked out, whichever they need. They couldn't get in because the door nearest the street, I mean, also was unused and had furniture against it. And Deputy Foster was able, with his fire background and good common sense, thought quickly, reacted quickly. Used a garden hose, stuffed it through the, it was so hot that the window had shattered. And he was able to get the garden hose in his arm in there, it goes the smoke and fire away from the lady, long enough to allow the fire department to arrest, and she, she lived. So that's.
Yeah.
So maybe that was named Ronnie, that actually made a phone call, found the smoke, called nine one one.
Well, and as a consequence, his early action on that, I don't know, I like to give him more credit. But the other duplexes, my understanding was unharmed. And the occupant as well, but it, it, no smoke damage as far as I know.
Mister Mayor? I was just thinking, maybe we could do something with a commendation from the council for a couple of, I don't know if that's appropriate from your end of things, is that normally done?
You're my boss. If you could have him, I'd be glad to thank him first. He had, he had days off, because, yeah, of course, I was after him.
They gave CPR to the dog and a cat, couldn't save the cat, they saved the dog.
Did they, yeah. I think there was the CPR.
Her drugs are, her evil.
Good.
She's gonna be okay.
That's not the most it was, the regard to those made the difference.
Sergeant Ortiz, quick question, I haven't thought of, I, we, I don't think this has come up for quite a while, but how are we sitting nowadays with houses of drugs? I mean, places where there's a known kind of looking, something's going on, it used to be kind of a known thing, there were several, how are we doing nowadays?
I think thanks to Mark, we're doing fantastic. He shut down several of our known problem drug houses, we still have a couple that remain, but I, I think they've taken note. You know, between the code enforcement and the law enforcement. They, they've slowed down drastically. There's a couple houses that jump out to me on Branson, that, that there, there's a lot, there's far less action in place.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, second or these? Thank you so much, appreciate it. Moving to council comments.
Yes, I would, I'd like to bring some exciting news. So from last meeting, we had a discussion about unmet transit needs with the stage bus system. And we voted unanimously to send the submission to the local transportation commission. And on the tenth of August, that letter came up at the local transportation commission, where I'm a commissioner. I was able to introduce it and both Lukey, Councilwoman Lukeyzi and Mayor Brian both were able to chime in and make their comments. And it came down to how the commission wanted to, to deal with it, and I have to hand it to well, first of all, Ed Valenzuela, our supervisor, was unable to make it, and I just talked to him a few minutes ago and he wished he would have been there and but it was Michael Cobb, that supervisor Cobb Seth, that came up with the solution, and the solution was that the commission found that they were unmet needs. The discussion was with what was laid out as an option was where it said, but they're unreasonable, and what he came up with saying, these are unmet needs, but they cannot be met at this time, and then we directed staff to go out and get an R F P to come up with a model, so it's moving forward. It's actually happening, and now the, now the goal is, is to find every way to piece together funding, so when we do finally get a model that we could say this is how we'll do it. So that's kind of the challenges, and I've got some ideas to play around with there, but there, for the first time, there's an opportunity and a possibility that the stage could be modernized and made into something that really serves the people, and as a member of the board of directors of the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, I think a lot about all the senior citizens in this town that don't have transportation, and I can't wait till the day when we can say, get aboard, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to take this opportunity to wish Vice Mayor Deutsch a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Three items. I was trying to spread myself between Brew Fest, which was a pretty good event, and the Pacific Crest Music Festival, which in my view was an extraordinary event, this is the tenth year for the Pacific Crest Music Festival that brings master students and master teachers to Dunsmere for two weeks, where they undergo advanced music training under the tutelage of some of the best musicians in the world. Violinists that won the national championship in Canada. The first viola player for the San Francisco Symphony, and there were probably twenty-five. I'm not gonna call them children, I'm gonna call them young aspiring musicians that received stand-up applause after stand-up applause from a sold-out audience. And if music and art are the answer for this community, and I believe they are, this was a sweet moment for the city of Dunsmere and all the leaders of the Pacific Crest that asked for no money from the city, they raised it on their own. Secondly, congratulations to Blaze on their grand opening. This was an absolute fantasy when I started on the city council in two thousand and eight, and yet here we are, starting a green legal industry that's going to contribute significant revenue in our city in the years ahead. And I'm very happy for the three years it took to convert an abandoned gas station into a useful retail business. Good for everybody involved. My third comment, which may get into the community funding requests, is as I walk the town every day, I am aware that the friends of the library would like to have murals on the city-owned library building. And I know we had this discussion about, obviously the roof needs repair, and we acted on that. But the side of the building, the north side of the building is pockmarked, it's decaying, and it will obviously need to be repaired for everything from water damage in the coming winter to a suitable surface for doing a mural next spring. So I would hope as we, apparently we haven't closed out the budget for last fiscal year, but as we roll into the fiscal year we're in now, that we look ahead and provide funding for that. Thank you.
I don't have much to update on, I did get a contact from one of the Native American tribes relating to Mossbury again. It's just to check back in from when they made inquiries about a year ago, and just asking about the status of the project and hoping to be consulted on it. That's one of the things that we haven't done yet, because we're waiting for the approvals from Uni-Pacific before bringing them in to talk about any other details with that project. So that's, I've been talking to them a little bit on that, I don't believe I have anything else at this. What?
Which tribe?
Corr. Yeah, and they're very lovely, they're, they're very nice. So, and, and honestly, there's a lot of opportunities with the cultural and natural history of that project, that they could actually be a really great asset for us as we move from the engineering design into lease and then into construction. We will obviously need closer to four million dollars for the construction of the project, and so they could be a great partner in looking into different types of funding mechanisms for that. So I'm, I'm thinking of it as more of a good collaborative partnership that we can do with them. We haven't had a great collaborative partnership with the tribes here previously, even though they have been present here historically, and so I think it's a good meeting and a good initial discussion.
Question, is that something you wanted, that you'd like to expand on in terms of making that relationship more public?
Um, no, so tribal governments, in my experience working with them throughout the Midwest and here, so you kind of have to leave it up to them to make the decision of what that looks like. So for us to go in and say, we want you to be at these meetings, or we want to do this, may not be the best way of going about that, some of them want to be more involved in terms of just reviewing and then making comments, some of them want to be very on-the-ground assisting, and so I kind of leave it to them to make that decision, because when it really comes down to the consultation part in California specifically, and, and just personally, I believe they are considered a sovereign nation, and so it's really kind of their, their lead in most cases, so I just kind of take a role of just listening to what their concerns are and see how we can accommodate them. In most cases, they're all very reasonable and very simple. So again, it's similar to the environmental cleanup of the rail yard, they're entitled to have their own inspections, have their own influence, have their own time because of their standing with the United States government and the state of California. And so I personally do not like to infringe upon that and give them lots of space, but for the most part, it's good that they're reaching that.
Well, I was just thinking, I, I had no idea about the tribe and the relationship until you brought it up at the last meeting, and all I'm thinking of, maybe this Tim Holt project to go out and explain in an article that we can all read what the relationship is, because I, I really don't know, I'd like, like to learn somewhere online.
I did get contacted by someone from the San Francisco Chronicle about a week ago, asking about that specifically, and my typical response is that I do not have the authority to speak on behalf of the tribe. And so I, I stay out of that mainly, I always, again, like I said, from my professional and personal opinion, I can give that stance of how I like to work with them, but I can't speak on their behalf what, what our partnership looks like.
Understood.
So it is, it, it can be very sensitive, and it is based off of the tribe itself, certain tribes have different relationships and energy, I guess, is a good way of putting it, some are much easier to work with and some are less, and that's not necessarily a negative comment on some of those tribes, it's just you have to realize the generational trauma that they've gone through and it can be very distrustful. So you just give them space and, and options for how they would like to, you know, contribute.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Sergeant, thank you.
Exactly, you don't, there's too many.
I've been, I've been yelled at at a tribal meeting before. And you can't, you can't take it personally, you kind of just have to sit back and realize that it's based off of some of the things that happened, so.
Well, that was cool. I, uh, my announcements are Brew Fest was very successful, if you weren't there, you missed it. The next thing that's gonna be put on is a steampunk, and that is September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. I encourage everybody to come out and have a good time. If you weren't at the Brew Fest, the, it took a little bit, say an hour and a half longer to get in, due to some technical errors that went up again. But the band, Society Handshake, was gracious enough to play that extra hour and a half and come offstage and dance through the public, and it was an amazing event, and I'm sure glad I was there and was part of it.
Thank you Blake for the music.
Sure, that's right, one of the members.
Thank you for the music, Mr. Saxophone right over there, he got there.
Bring your trumpet.
Yes, pretty good, too.
Bring your trumpet next time.
You were mentioning Mossbury Falls, and it's come to my attention there, there, I guess there's trash, yes, there's a lot of trash at Mossbury Falls. And I would like to thank my railroad people that are out there that gave me guidance, wisdom, and educated me, steered me in the right direction. I tried to put together a river cleanup, it ain't gonna happen unless you get, not their permission, but their consent. So I guess in the past when we've done river cleanup, they haven't run the trains by for a couple hours while we did that. As it be known to me, I just thought, we always timed it right, I guess that's not the way it was, so. So I got direct to make some phone calls, and apparently the trash that was described to me came off of the train, and it falls under the trains, under Uni-Pacific's, I guess they've got a crew that goes out and cleans that up. So I made a report, and they're gonna go out and clean up the trash at Mossbury Falls. So for those people that were very concerned, we got it handled, if it don't work, we'll take care of it one way or another. I have a feeling that pretty soon we'll have somebody at the helm steering the boat, that can make the right phone calls and let the right people know and get us the right not permission, but what I should. Yeah, consent, big difference. And just, there was farmer's market today, I, it, it's hot as hell, there's a lot of people out there. So I would encourage everybody to go to the farmer's market, they're on Thursdays out there at the ballpark, parking lot. You got some good stuff from what I hear, I have not yet been there, I admit it, but I encourage everybody to go out there and support the local, the local farmers and the local people that are over there at the farmer's market, it's a pretty good deal. And the last thing is, it seems that lately there's been a lot of people making career changes, I just want to wish them the best of them. Thanks.
Thank you, that's what I said. Busy, but very much looking forward to welcoming a new city manager, and we'll address that later on. Brew Fest was incredible, I'd like to thank everyone involved with it. I also had the opportunity since our last council meeting to be up towards Mont, with some friends of mine that hadn't been in this area before, and we actually drove up to the airport and somewhat surprised to see about fourteen people there and four helicopters. And Forest Service had some sort of major operation based out of there.
Isn't that what you were saying when the A D O came down from San Francisco, or it came up from San Francisco, down from, anyway, that she's saying that they're gonna put more resources into there, so.
Yeah, potentially, I mean, the bottom line is at least being used by someone to the public's benefit, it was encouraging to see that. Did you pay us some amount, it's not a very large amount, but the main thing is it's being used. Did you pay us some amount? It's not a very large amount, but the main thing is it's being used.
It's nice to know that in your backyard.
Let's move forward to the approval of the minutes. We have two meetings, July twenty-first and August fourth. Are there any questions concerning the minutes?
Um, well, I actually read them and on page eleven of our agenda packet. The August fourth meeting. This sort of leads into the chamber request for community funds. And we get to that discussion at our last meeting. And at the bottom of page eleven. Further discussion about funding the chamber. Lukasey doesn't want chamber money siphoned to another organization like Rotary. Points out, and then that's the end of the sentence.
I believe the comment was that there are members on the council who are on Rotary and that may be a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
On voting to or against.
I'd like that to be an amendment to the minutes.
All right, on page thirteen of the agenda packet, I believe we're missing the letter L. First bottom page, full council was in agreement, so I'll have to read. Are there any questions?
Also Wendy, there's a zero missing on page eleven as well. Motion to table the request for twenty thousand by Lukasey. There's just a missing zero.
Any further discussion of the motion or the minutes as a mention?
We good? Make the motion to approve the minutes as a mention for the July twenty-first and the August fourth.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye. Against? Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to our consent agenda this evening, we have one item tonight. It's the check registry from July thirty-first through August thirteenth. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I made a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion at hand? All those in favor say aye. Against? Motion carries? Moving, we have no public hearing tonight, so we're moving to old business, community promotions funding. Chamber of Commerce, Blake?
Yeah, and I, I guess we could save committee reports. I know Finance Committee didn't meet. We did discuss the audit a little bit for, in further detail. So for Peter and Matthew's kind of benefit, we discussed a bunch of the audit, the audit deficiencies. Both twenty twenty-one oh one and then oh two and oh three. So that was fully delved into. Got the whole corrective action plan discussed. So talked about all that. I made up a little bullet point kind of of all the rest of the audit findings regarding airport sewer. The net position of the sewer enterprise, the solid waste enterprise. The city loan committee needing to meet more often and create a debt policy. Again, FAA and other reporting requirements, creating policies and procedures for entire citywide. And then budget amendments, doing more budget amendments. So those are the kind of the bullet point pieces that we.
And creating a policies and procedures document there. I filled it up, yes.
So now you'll be able to.
So, right, imagine that, yeah. Yeah, so Finance Committee did go through a little more in depth. So if Mayor Brian or Councilman Bar, if you need more detailed information or something, we can agendize an item and.
We already tabled the audit review at a meeting. There wasn't the full council and Finance Committee hadn't met yet. So upon Blake's return later September, perhaps you could bring it back to council.
Did we skip committee report?
Well caught.
I have one. Well, in the chair's absence, the solid waste committee did meet Diana Clemmons. Alex, Blake, and myself. And we're trying to focus. It's August, September. We are really late in doing our green waste cleanup program. But it was a very productive meeting. And what we have in mind for next month. Is a. Clemmons Waste Lead Pickup in the residential neighborhoods. On two Tuesdays, I think it's the thirteenth and the twentieth in September. Because that is the best day for Clemmons. And then we wanted to have. And the idea is curbside pickup. And then Clemmons will dispose of the green waste. This is all learning for them. The other learning exercise was to have a Saturday in September. Where you bring your green waste to be defined to a central location in Dunsmere. There it will be chipped and trucked away. Apparently Clemmons and the city has control over two twenty-foot, twenty-yard, twenty-ton. Two big dumpsters. And then it was my bright idea. Apparently the city owns a chipper, but the city rarely uses it. So for the Saturday event, I've been trying to get a hold of a cut above. Which does a lot of business with the city of Dunsmere. And I've used several times. I like them. Would you be willing to bring a chipping crew for learning purposes? We do have a small budget. Would they work with the city on a cost-effective basis? But people would bring their green waste and they would chip it and dispose of it. And from all of this, it's a down payment on what we're going to do next year and the year after. As we head toward twenty twenty-six and mandatory compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. So I pinged a cut above today, left two messages. And we're obviously gonna want a meeting pretty soon.
Mr. Mayor? If I could follow up on that, because on D cap, there's a thing we've been looking at. And I just had a kind of a little bit of a breakthrough. I heard that through the fire, some of the fire safe councils, they have chipper trucks. And the key to what they do there is that they drive around the neighborhood. And that means that somebody doesn't have to take all the brush that they're trying to clear. They can just bring it down and chip it. Now, I'm not saying that's necessarily possible today, but that's one of the things that, that from the D pack side, we want to work on. To look at a way to deal with that problem. How do you deal with every year, all the brush around the city? And get it, because if you have to get somebody with the pickup truck and crew to get your branches and your logs and all of that and then haul it. So I just want to let you know it's working on the other side, if you keep that in mind.
I believe Linda Scheiben's been attending her solid waste committee meetings as well.
Yeah, I just talked with her a couple of days ago, so she hadn't had a chance to mention that, but we're gonna look into that and let you know.
Any more additional media reports?
All right, so community promotions funding then. So I don't know if Bruce wants to take any of this, but I did reach out to Luann. I told her about the meeting tonight, but I, I thought maybe it'd be best coming from Bruce. If you want to take something now. Otherwise, the whole idea is community promotions funding was discussed last week, last council meeting. Now the chamber request is coming back to the table.
Yeah, for those unfamiliar, we run a small grants program to some community promotions. Longstanding recipients have been Chamber of Commerce, the library first and foremost, and Parks and Rec District. For Operation Global Cost of the Pool, in addition to a number of other organizations. And there's just a lot of questions concerning the Chamber of Commerce's application and where the funds would be spent, twenty thousand dollar request.
Okay, so let me start off by saying I do not believe, and I'm a task, he is here to represent the chamber. And he's not only a member of the board of the chamber, but he's also on the finance committee, so he was intimately familiar. At the last meeting, I brought up what the concerns were about the Rotary and the split. And it's my understanding, I won't go into detail, but that it's a misunderstanding. And so with that in mind, I'd like to ask Amataki to come up and explain from the chamber's response. And I know that they got together and cleared it up, I believe, so this should be straightforward.
Yeah, hello everyone. I'm Amataki, four zero one nine Forest Lane. Tonight I'm here to represent Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce regarding the funding that we request. I'm happy to answer as much as I can, any questions you might have.
I think the big thing that just came up at the last one was it was referenced that the amount wouldn't be split with the Rotary. For scholarships. And I think that was the big confusion there. So could you talk about how the relationship of the Rotary is with the event and how money is divided or not divided? How does that work?
Well, the partnership with the Rotary has been going on since two thousand fourteen. I believe in two thousand thirteen, I got the story a little bit about what was going on, how it started. So in two thousand thirteen, there was a Brew Fest in Mount Shasta. I believe it was happening at the. Yes, so it was a very low attendance. The organizer wanted to shut down the event. And Land Foreman, he was a Rotary president by then, approached David Flarno. I believe he was part of the chamber to do the Brew Fest in Dunsmere together.
Oh, he's both, actually, he was both Rotary and part of the chamber, so that's where the connection comes in.
Was he, was he a part of Rotary, David Flarno Biden? Okay, so that is how it started and it has been going on. So that, what happens is that. Rotary puts a lot of volunteer hours towards this event. And what we do is, end of this event, we share the profit with them. So the profit that they have goes towards the program that they use, so. Yes, I mean, currently, we discussed about this partnership and we would love to keep honoring this for the future event.
But if I could be clear, my understanding is, is that the Rotary is asking for twenty thousand. The Brew Fest is a separate thing that is the result of everything going in and then profits coming out and being split. So it's not like we're trying to give money to the Rotary here. The Rotary is a result of the work that they did in putting on the Brew Fest.
I, I, I believe this is a really good partnership and chamber should be involving with more community organizations. To come up events like this. And, and we should, we should keep doing this.
I gotta say one thing, that the Rotarians that sit on the city council. Make no decisions for the Rotary. We're not on the board. We're just members of Rotary. We have no decision. We are not part, but I do say that in the.
I mean, you have been at the Brew Fest and you have seen how successful it was. And next, next big one that we have is Steampunk. So a lot of volunteers are working to make this happen. And most of them are, you know, from Rotary Club, so. I mean, we cannot say that we don't see their involvement and how much they put in these events.
How much money did the event net this year?
Oh, we are working on it. If, if, maybe two weeks later or maybe, maybe a month later with your, with your meetings. I'm happy to represent the numbers. But it's a great event that we profit.
Oh, I have no issue with the event itself. Like I said, my, my issue is budget line item two. Expense to include contract labor, entertainment, and split with Rotary, twenty eight thousand six hundred dollars. And again, my point that I brought up at the last meeting is if Rotary is requesting money for scholarships. They should file their own promotions funding request and request scholarships separately.
I totally understand. That's total, total misunderstanding.
And I think that's gonna be something that if we do move forward, from my personal experience. You know, I think there's gonna be heavy scrutiny on the line item numbers for this event. Because again, I have no issue with the event. I have no issue with donating money to the high school. I just, I want to make sure that what we are funding, you know, is straightforward, that we're not convoluting these requests into one.
Trust me, I'm the treasurer, so I'll be in big trouble.
So, all right, thank you.
My question's mostly regarding the overall year for the chamber or projections. Because in the past, the chamber hasn't necessarily attached the event to it. It's part of our confusion. It's something we're gonna be working the Brew Fest and that one event comes together. But what is the overall projected earnings of the chamber prior to this twenty thousand?
That, that, I don't, I don't want to talk about it because I'm not fully in control of that. However, I'm gonna be working with, about the budget with our executive director next week. Again, the next, next meeting, I can clarify that much, much better.
Well, I'm very much in alignment with Councilmember Lukasey. And I do appreciate that the chamber has now provided some profit and loss statements for Brew Fest. But as I look at them, events income. So July nineteenth, July twenty, Brew Fest, twenty four thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Was that admission fees? Was that money from the city? Was that money from sponsors?
I think that, that should be the profit from the event.
And was that, was that the chambers have or is that the total profit that you done split with Rotary?
That, that was a total profit.
Here's, here's my issue. As someone. Very dear friend of mine who's on Rotary solicited me and you thanked me. I wrote a check for five hundred dollars. And as I look at the big banner over the bandstand, I see a whole bunch of sponsors, including Pace Engineering. Who you said contributed four thousand dollars, I assume cash. That's what I mean. It wasn't goods or services. So is this double dipping? Is this triple dipping? You've got income from the tickets that were expensive. You've got income from sponsors that's not revealed in the profit and loss. You've got income from the vendors. And in the end, you can't tell how much is going back to the city and how much is going to other things. And so we ended our last meeting with Councilmember Lukasey saying you aren't for anything. And I really am hesitant until we find out, in your words, twenty twenty-two Brew Fest was very successful. What does that mean? How could, how could you not know about the dollars? Okay.
Am I correct? To the topic here. Am I correct in understanding that the chamber wants to kind of review this application and be less focused on the Brew Fest? That's kind of what I'm understanding. We don't have enough detail or clarity surrounding finances at Brew Fest. So to really be able to donate to the Brew Fest. And I, for one, still find it somewhat confusing. It happened. It was a profitable event. Is this for funding the future Brew Fest?
Let me clarify.
Can I actually have Mr. Tassi answer?
I, I believe this, this funding request has been written in February, Mr. Mayor. And, and looking at order fundings, I think all of them put their fundings in February as well. So the money that we requested was for the current Brew Fest, but we spent the money that we had in the bank. So for the next event, we're not gonna have the money if we don't have.
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
So, one more thing. I'm sorry about that. So the next meeting, I'm hoping, will have a much, much better reporting about Brew Fest.
I've sat in all the meetings and there seems to be some real confusion here about what's going on. On one hand, we have a Brew Fest event. It has dollars and input and outcome. And part of that is an arrangement between Rotary and the chamber. As far as the other part of it, which is the finances of the chamber. Up until the point when this was put in, I had been talking continually with Luann. And Luann was working with Blake to go over the finances, to go over what was out there, to do all of that. And I thought that would be sufficient to say that. And I thought that would be sufficient to say that the Finance Director was aware of what was going on, and that there were making progress. Now we're getting to the point where because of this confusion, that we're considering maybe the Council should look into the finances of the Brew Fest. All we're saying is, is that every year, and you can argue whether or not we should continue to put money into the Chamber. That's a, you know, ongoing debate. But the point is, is that for the last several years, the Chamber has asked for $15,000. That's what they're doing again this year. It's not about Brew Fest, it's not about Rotary. They're saying for their budget, and if you wanna see the budget, they can come in and make a full presentation, so that everyone gets the blessing. But this is gobbledygook right now. We're not giving any money to Rotary as a council. We're giving money to the Chamber so their budget can work. And one of the events had money going in and out, but that doesn't have anything to do with us giving money to the Rotary.
So just a point of procedure, we're supposed to be in clarifying questions, and then go to public comment and then discussion?
I just wanted to clarify from the standpoint of what was going on in the Chamber, and the Chamber working with Blake, and all of this. And there was supposed to be a time where they would come and they would talk about the budget. But in the meantime, the promotion thing came through, they had to put something down, they put this down, and it got confused. They're not, we're not funding Brew Fest.
Well, thank you. We know that the Chamber, you know, and you definitely give as many reports on it, is a work in progress. Thankfully, it sounds like they have a lot of dedicated volunteers, you know, rebuilding at this point. And I think Council is aware of that. We do have specific questions when we're spending taxpayers' dollars. But let's try to move this forward through clarifying questions. Are there any additional questions?
Well, just one more. We, at our last meeting, we said yes to $2,000 for an entity called the Railroad Days Committee. I have no idea who the Railroad Days Committee is.
I believe that's Sandra Hutton.
So if you look at the application from the Chamber on page 18 of our packet, it says we want funding for events such as Railroad Days. And here again, it just seems totally disintegrated as to who's responsible. Is Rotary responsible for Brew Fest? Is Chamber responsible for doing? Same thing with Steampunk and Easter egg hunt.
Each organization spends their own money on different aspects of it. That's the way it works. Rotary goes off.
We're not in clarifying questions with this conversation.
So, so how does the Chamber coordinate with the Railroad Days Committee in asking the city for money for Railroad Days?
Mr. Art, these are all happening under Chamber's leadership. And again, Chamber is just reaching out to these communities, or these organizations, to put this event together. That, that's all I can say at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional clarifying questions. Thank you, Mr. Tasi. I really appreciate it. And thank you for your involvement with the Chamber.
Thank you.
You know, they're much stronger with your involvement. I'll now open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. All right, I see none, and I'll close public comments on this. I propose that we keep our conversation to a narrow focus of what we're comfortable doing tonight. If that's funding the Chamber, not associated with the Brew Fest, so be it. If it's asking for further clarification, you know.
I think just very quickly, a point of clarification from my, my standpoint. I think the confusion, I think going back, the mayor put it correctly. The name of the project or service that we evaluated with this application is specifically the Brew Fest. I think, I think what is confusing, and one of the other things I wanted to point out, was the budget presented on page 19 of the packets, and their request actually totals $32,357. They're only requesting 20,000. I think there's, one, a confusion on how the form should be filled out. And I think the other confusion too is their request should have read Chamber of Commerce 2022, 2023. And then listed the variety of. I think that would have made it much more clear to us that it is. I think the other issue, like I said, is one of the budget line items specifically says that the $28,600 is a split with Rotary. And that is what triggered myself saying, okay, this is actually two organizations applying for one item.
But now it's this profit that's being split, right?
Well, and, and I don't know that. I'm just basing it off of the application that we got. And I think it's not so much a flawed request, it's a flawed application for the request.
I agree. That's exactly right, ma'am.
So I think my perspective at this point is I would like a clarification on this. I know we did not give the other organizations this option, but I think this is the only one that's a little convoluted. But at this point, I would like to maybe send this application form back to the applicant for amendment to clarify what they are asking for. Because we can sit here, and Councilmember Deutsch, I appreciate that you're working with the Chamber, and you can speak on their behalf for some pieces, and the same for Amet Tasi. But I think the Chamber needs to sit down together and fill out this form and be extremely clear.
I thought they were.
Yeah, and so, and I thought this was gonna be clarified as well a little bit more. So I don't wanna scrutinize the profits of the Brew Fest. I think knowing that is gonna be super helpful, what the split was, and understanding what the need is. But I, I would be in favor of sending this back to the applicant for an amendment, and giving them 30 days to do so, and bringing it back to Council after that 30-day period.
May I add something to that, or propose? I would also suggest that the Chamber sit down and go over their budget. Because we wanna take a good look at it, I propose that we do that through the Finance Committee. And ask them to come and sit in the Finance Committee, you can ask questions, look at it, and then make a report back to the Council, so that we don't have to spend the Council meeting diving down into the minutia of the Chamber operations.
I will say, I did, I did appreciate the profit-loss pieces that were provided this time through. I think that's enough for me to make a decision. I don't think I need a presentation from them.
Okay.
I mean, I know Councilmember Art may have different viewpoints, but I just would like, I would like a much more clean form of what are you requesting?
I totally agree with you. I, I, to be honest with you, when I saw it, I was upset myself, but it came through that way in confusion. And however we wanna work it out, I'm glad you helped.
Yeah, I'd like to just mention one concern I had continuously with the Chamber being one. And it's partly because the Chamber, it's a small town, they do a lot of good in a lot of different areas. But I don't like giving these fundings, you know, we're granting funds, limited funds, we're doing good in the community. I don't like to grant them to other granting agencies. So if, if the Chamber is using the funds to, you know, okay, apply to us, we can do this, this or that, essentially. You know, if that's how it's going to be set up, I think we need to recognize that, you know, fund appropriately. But it gets a little confusing, you know, and you don't know what it is it's funding. It's something that's bad too, but any one of these events could come to us directly and also apply for it.
In the past, that was the way it was done.
Yeah.
Then we decided to ask the Chamber to do it, so they're our agent in that sense. Because we used to have to manage the funding for all the different events in town.
Agreed, and, and it becomes a tricky issue though, because we have no say in which events the Chambers accept or doesn't accept. And of course, in the, you know, age-old wisdom of the town, we've got the important ones, and we work from there, increase. But there are other events in town that are not Chamber-sponsored. I think the Chamber would like them to be, but just a, a conversation around how we can better structure resources for people who'd like to put on events in this town.
I did bring up the idea that was brought up at the last meeting about working with Discover Siskiyou and looking at a, an overarching strategy for marketing. So that's something that I'm hoping will proceed forward from there.
Yeah, or I, I'd be open to something along the lines of a matching grant for an organization that could raise money for an event, having something available to match that. So the, the impetus is someone else to go out there and raise grassroots support. So we're never in a situation where the city's just deciding it's a good idea, and we don't necessarily have the cohesion behind it to hold up. But I, I'd like to see it further, but I also don't wanna, you know, put the Chamber in any danger when it comes to, and I think we're deeply supportive of the work they're doing, and if you can communicate that in the next meeting.
So Amet, if I were you, I would just chalk it up to a bad application, which started off a little confusion, but.
We can discuss that later.
Yeah.
The business, please. So there's a motion to bring this back in 30 days.
I, I didn't really make a motion, but it was just kind of my perspective, so.
I'll second it.
My, my horoscope said not to argue and pick fights. So I'm happy with the discussion. I'm obviously signing on to the bad application because it centers on Brew Fest 2022, which is over. So let's be forward-looking and look at 2022, 23, the current fiscal year, and not conflate one event with whatever the Chamber's trying to do.
Totally agree with you. All right.
So yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to request additional information and clarification on the Chamber for the request, just based off of our notes today. And I can send that in an email after this, and move, part of that is a motion to table for a minimum of 14 days to give them time to do that. I'm not gonna do 30, because they may have one meeting in the next two weeks, and I don't wanna keep them on the, on the strength of that.
Could you speak to the timeframe, perhaps, Mr. Tasi?
Two weeks.
Well, table to a future meeting.
Table to a future meeting. Okay, thank you.
Um, I would recommend that that's done with Blake, so that we have that connection and everything.
We'll actually, we'll have a new city manager.
Well, in terms of finance, I'm just saying. Wanna know that too?
Yeah. So, all right.
Was there a second by anybody?
Second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries? Move into very happy news. We have an application to serve on our Solid Waste Committee. Mr. Daniel Prelap.
I'm, I am disappointed that Mr. Prelap is not here. But I have worked with Daniel on the Dunsmere Fire Safe Council. Daniel, for a while, was on DPAC, but he thought his service would be more valuable. If you look at his application, he's a certified forester. And like Alex Bendel, he knows a lot about turning green waste into both profitable products and carbon, species of trees and brush. He's like an encyclopedia. So when he said he'd be interested in joining the Solid Waste Committee, I thought it was sort of a community godsend. So he's not here.
He attended last meeting though, for Solid Waste.
If, if, if you prefer to put it over, put it over, but I'd be happy to move his application to join our Solid Waste Committee.
He still does attend the DPAC meetings, he's just not a member too, so he's also got that dual connection. I'll second that. Oh, I guess we do.
Any questions regarding his application? All right, open this up to public comment, the appointment of a member, community member to the Solid Waste Committee. See no public comment? I will close it. Proceed with the question.
And if you wanna blame the reason he's not here on me, I'm, I'm all for it. I don't know if I reached out to him to let him know that this was coming, so.
Yeah, he, my understanding is he did attend the last Solid Waste meeting and was very interested in the committee, and that's what spurred him to put in his application. So he has made an effort to meet with us ahead of time. And then it's good to know that he also attends DPAC on his own time as well, having that, so.
There was a motion, there was a second call.
I believe Peter motioned, and Councilmember Deutsch seconded, is that correct?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, where's the carries?
Welcome to the party, Daniel, wherever you are.
It's my great honor for Adam A. of New Business to introduce potentially the new city manager of the City of Dunsmere, Dustin Reeve. If you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Mayor and Council, thank you for, thank you for offering me the position. I'm excited to be here. And, you know, I guess I stand for any further questions every day, so. Well, I'm glad to be here.
How do you like Southern Siskiyou so far?
So far, it's, it's been too hot. We haven't had enough rain. No, but I think that's everywhere in, it seems like the United States right now. But no, it's been great. My, my family and I, we moved on the first of August. And so we have been just kind of going out and about, and my kids start school on Monday. So we're kind of working through the housing stuff and, and those kind of things, but everything's been going good so far.
Dustin, since this is being recorded and out there for other folks down the line, could you introduce yourself to the?
And maybe give a little bit of your background for people who are from the public.
Absolutely. So, so my name's Dustin Reeve. I was born and raised in Nebraska. So it's a bit of a, I, I wouldn't say it's a far stretch, but a lot of people think it's a far stretch that I entered up here. So I spent, I, right out of high school, I spent almost 11 years in the military. Work in the Army, working on Apache helicopters. I traveled and lived all over the world and, and the country. And after that, I, I got into aviation for a while. And then I worked in the agriculture sector for a while. And then I decided to go back to, to serving the people, went to the public sector. And so I started in 2013 on my track to be a city manager. I have my master's degree in public administration from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. I've worked at the City of Omaha, Nebraska, early in my career. And then I moved on to my first city administrator position in Clarion, Iowa. And then a city administrator position in Orno, Minnesota. And then also as a city manager of Scottsbluff, Nebraska. And so over that period of time, as we travel with our children, we've kind of always manifested the idea of, well, why, why are we traveling here? Why don't we just live here? And so through that, we've kind of sought out a location, and it happened to be Northern California. And, and so I did, I applied, and, and here I am. And I thank you guys for giving me that opportunity, but we're, so far, we're enjoying it, and it's exciting.
Well, just a comment, and I see Amet is left, but for the Dunsmere business community, and I've been to Omaha, I used to have a mother in Omaha. And I would go down to the old part of downtown Omaha, and how creatively they revived the balance between history and commerce. Farmers markets.
Right.
Attracts people like crazy, restaurants, bars. So I think that's valuable context. But for the small coterie of businesses that we have in Dunsmere, they all would love to meet you and hear about your background. So if you could work with the Chamber and the mayor, I'd be happy to sponsor, I'd get to know the Dustin section at Pops or somewhere else.
That's a good idea.
Wine and cheese. Because it's, you know, you come at a time where we believe we've reached the tipping point. And there's better days ahead, but the more we could start to build these relationships, the better.
That's why I'm here.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Don't screw this up.
I was gonna say, do you wanna open it for public?
Public comments up for public comment, and then we'll get a discussion of the contract. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium or raise your hand. See none? I will close public comment. And just say that the contract reflects a great deal of work on both the city and Dustin's part. City attorney has reviewed it, and we really have brought to Council something that I think really works very well for both parties. Both parties had a lot of time to think about what it is they were actually looking at. You may notice on your prior review of this that we've dropped the three-year contract. And that's because the new city manager intends to stay here for a lot longer. He's committed a professional commitment of five years, but it's an open-ended contract, so there's no need for him to leave after five. You know, Council will be very happy to look at that section.
I make a motion that we accept the contract. That's what I call it.
I think it's.
And welcome him. Thank you for stepping up.
I believe it's a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion in motion there?
Peter, Peter has some proofreading things, so I, I will make a couple of proofreading. None of these are substantial.
I agree. They're non-substantive changes.
He really doesn't like commas.
Well, the one, the one part that was unclear to me is for the moving expenses, a five-year period. And the notion is, if Dustin stays for five years, he gets reimbursed, he doesn't get reimbursed.
No, so the notion is he gets reimbursed as soon as we, well, as soon as he submits his expenses, you know, subsequent to a stop in his contract, he submits his expenses, we reimburse him. You know, subsequent to that stuff in this contract, he submits his expenses, we reimburse him.
Right.
If he leaves in the first year, he would have to reimburse the entire, say it's fifteen thousand, for round numbers. The entire fifteen thousand, if he leaves in the second year, he'd have to reimburse twelve thousand, third year, nine thousand.
And that's what I thought it meant, but it doesn't really say that. But anyway, these are mostly nitpicks to make it a more professional contract. Really, I, if this was reviewed by the city attorney.
He was, actually, John was here and he's reviewed it.
Aye, boy.
I know you would.
Wouldn't, wouldn't have gotten out of my shop.
Do you have any specific minor amendments you'd like to work on or?
Giuliana has to.
Yeah, they're, they're all just basically just grammatical and there's like a couple of missing words here and there. Like time and matter, it just says time banner, so like simple stuff.
Cool, alright.
We're all in agreement, call vote.
Yeah. Alright, since this is spending money, could you roll call vote with me?
Councilmember R.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Mayor Brian.
Listen, carry your hand this way.
I know Blake is, Blake is. Blake is like, you finally relieved.
Great day, you touched me right now.
Blake can go back.
Great.
We're gonna cheer him up.
Thank you.
Thank you for the briefing this afternoon. Alright, well.
It's already been, it's already been fantastic.
Now that we can officially welcome our new city manager, I'd like to have a standing ovation for Blake.
I hope you very much enjoy your vacation.
I will, thank you very, yes.
And technically, Justin, you can sit next to him now, you're technically an employee.
You are the official city manager now.
Come on over, this is your chair.
There you go, you can even have this agenda. Thank you for that, council members, that's.
Really like. You deserve it, thank you for all you've done.
And I am very much looking forward to continuing on and serving the city and I love the city and I love everybody here, so thank you.
That, that, that should extend to all staff too, because he took a little bit of a vote too.
That's very true.
I would like to, for the public out there that don't realize it, we, uh, when we lost our city manager Todd Uhas, we brought somebody in. And that didn't work out and so we went through the search and during that period of time. Blake Michelson, our finance director, took on the job of not only being finance director, but also the acting city manager. And he did that with a smile, I never saw a frown on his face, he was there every bit of the way and he took this city through that hard time. And I think we all owe him a debt of gratitude, the entire population of Dunsmere, that's all I have to say.
Alright, um, moving into new business item B, informational item, grant opportunity regarding railroad cleanup site.
Uh, this, this might be relatively short, I know, so Peter Mutter referenced a little bit of stuff, but, um, this mainly is an, an item. So the course, the UP rail yard cleanup that we all know about down there, well, through the course of that, so Jacobs is the engineering firm that's been hired with UP to coordinate that. Through kind of their, uh, scope of work. They are required to one remediate the, the current land, get it all cleaned up, yeah, make it safe and, and clean. Well, with the rebuilding process, they, they definitely have certain requirements, they have to do certain things, put in new trees, saplings. Giuliana may speak more to this, she knows a lot more than I do, but, um, so they have to do a little bit of stuff, but Jacobs is also saying, well. We want to look toward how it's actually going to look in the future, so there is a grant that they just passing along to the city. For us to potentially go forward with, um, and so we are trying to gauge a little bit of council interest at this moment. We definitely do want to worry about time constraints, bandwidth constraints, new city manager coming on board, so I just want to point that out. We also may need a potential point person, there is a twenty percent match to this grant. There's much more details involved, it's going to take more staff time, of course, to, to really research, but. The, the overarching idea is, is there something that can be done with this property down here? River access, uh, you know, ingress, egress, out. Some kind of, and so the, the, the grant, well, the grant.
It's not, it can't be.
Couldn't do too much parting, the, the grant itself is called reconnecting communities grant and it's kind of. The general picture there is, is any time that the rail has kind of displaced communities or like separated communities of some sort. It's a way to reconnect those things, so the idea there is, alright, the rail is here, can we reconnect our downtown to a beautiful riverfront spot? Get that aspect back together again, you know, the, the city was kind of created around the rail. But in any case, it, that's the kind of high, higher arching view of, of this grant.
Is this a planning grant?
So this would be just a planning grant, that's right.
Who's the funder, funding agency?
It's the Department of Transportation, so it's a, so federal money, Department of Transportation, we do need a grants.gov account, which I have created. Cause I've heard it takes a little bit of time to get, but I did create it just in case, plus there is an October timeframe, I think it's earlyish October that it would need to be done. So.
Picture in your mind of what might happen, I mean, what would you describe?
I think there's, I think there's places to be had in, 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 in some kind of fun. If anything, it's an idea for us to really consider what is going to happen down at that location. Then connecting. You know, we can go as big as connecting this field, this, this area down here, all the way up to the botanical gardens. All the way down to South Dunsmere, so along those lines. Or small focus on just that particular location, there's always the case of how is it going to work with UP? Are they really wanting people to be in their property? So there's, there's still a lot to, that this entails, um, there's, there's certain excitement, I've, I've talked about it with certain staff members. You know, it's, it's kind of a fifty fifty coin flip at this point. But just really wanted to get what your guys' idea is on it and definitely no action needs to be taken, but.
How competitive is this grant?
That's a great question, I don't know.
If it's a DOT federal grant, it's probably fairly competitive because it's a national pool, um, could you just send the grant guidelines, please?
Yep.
You would, you say we've got a big match twenty percent?
And we have to match twenty percent, it's a, I think it's a hundred thousand to like a two million.
Would Union Pacific want to pitch in on that twenty percent?
No.
I, I, I would highly doubt it at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, I typically, for, for these TOT grants, though, we could possibly do in time, so any staff time that's attributed to the project could go to it. So if we directed Rico to work on a portion of it with a consultant, we'd probably do the project.
Hundred percent correct.
That could go to the twenty percent, what can't go to the twenty percent is any work on the grant before the acquisition.
Well, the one thing that I want to make sure that regards what we do, that, that the Environmental Protection Agency makes sure that it's a hundred percent. Clean, there is no contamination underneath any kind of partlet that we want to build and that Union Pacific is responsible for anything that would have to.
Remediate.
Mitigate.
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 They would come back, they would, they'd be responsible, so if the city goes long and gets, makes, gets a grant, makes a part. Twenty years from now, it's on Union Pacific to fix it again, not the city, if that was the case. And this thing was derived just to give the city more river access, I'd be on board with that, but again, the contamination aspect. The coming back aspect, these are all things that I, I would be concerned with as well. I spoke with other people who have the same concern, but if everything was outlined and we held onto it. And I do think that we should ask them at that point to say, we're very concerned with that.
Fantastic points, yep.
They got more money.
Two things I'd like to know about it, first, if we could reach out to Union Pacific and see if this is even remotely possible, is their land? We'd have to have some arrangement to use it, decide to probably purchase, lease or easement. And how difficult that would be in relation to this grant, whether that just kills it or whether it really could work together on it. And then the second one is, before we say spend twenty percent of a hundred and fifty thousand, having a firm come up with the plans for something. Is it, is it the case where if we had those plans, it'd be fairly easy to get, you know, easy funding? Or are we just doing the plans in the hope that funding can come alongside? If, if it's understood that it's more of a trap where you get this and then other grants kind of more relevant, oh, I like that.
I mean, from the perspective of, you know, municipal projects, if it's a shovel-ready site, it's a very lucrative application. So I mean, there's a very good chance, but there's no guarantee. And again, it depends on what the actual outcome is, you know, whether it's going to be just habitat restoration, trail, seeding area. All of those things go into what categories you're then eligible for, for different grants. Typically, the more stuff you put into it, the more eligible grants that you have for those different types of pieces. For example, CDFW's been, um, I've been talking to one of them, we haven't applied for it, but there's the duck stamp money. And that can go to a lot of environmental projects on the river, um, because if it creates habitat for water fowl, you're eligible for those dollars. So if this project has elements of that, it could make it eligible for that funding for implementation. So it, it depends, it depends on the final project, it depends on, you know, a lot of different pieces that come out of it. But I think you hit the nail on the head is, we do not have ownership of the property, so that right there is a high risk for a lot of funding agencies. So unless we have a long-term agreement for that area and have access, I mean, we can see how long it's taken for Mossbury to go through. Granted, that's a much bigger project than what this would be, um, I think the main question is, yeah, although Jacob sent it to us, they are not Union Pacific.
No, but they are their engineers on the project.
But again, they don't have the authority to say that, that we can do this or not, so if it isn't exercising utility and we go through a whole planning piece. Put money up and Union Pacific easily could go, no, we're actually not interested.
One thing I, I was always struck by was UP's absolute want to stay away from any way that anyone could walk across tracks downtown. You know, any kind of vehicle or any kind of walking, you know, because that opens up a huge can of worms, so I would imagine, that's why I was just dreaming when I said it would be nice to. Have a big parking structure down there, but, um, if there's some way of doing it, that'd be great, because that's a lot of land and there's a river down there, so.
I think it would, I think there's two pieces, I know we have to still open this up for public comment, but I think the two pieces are, one, looking at the grant guidelines of what eligible activities are. And two, of those eligible activities, what is Union Pacific comfortable with? Cause again, it's not our land.
When we discuss it with Union Pacific, it kind of occurs to me that they probably are being mandated to do something with the land. They're not just going to remediate it and to leave it half-finished, or maybe they would. I, I don't want us to be applying for a grant and doing the work that they would be already required to do by the EPA.
Well, there's this nice declarative sentence in the staff report, Union Pacific is being required to remedy environmental waste in their central yard. Has Union Pacific told us how they're going to meet that requirement?
They actually just sent a new update today.
Okay.
There is a new update and on August twenty-second, they're going to, we're going to have a tour of it and there, we have some plans on what they're, what they're going to do.
Again, this is mostly for the city manager, but what I'd love to see is a map. Because the city of Dunsmere is married to the Union Pacific Railroad from our southern boundary to our northern boundary. So if you connect the dots, as we're trying to do for a robust future, certainly it goes from the south yard. This yard to Town and Dolly Park, to the city park, to Mossbury Falls. So as we talk about.
So this would be the impacted area that we would be doing the grant.
But what are they going to do, how much money they're going to put into it? I sort of close as I open, which is, we now know Amtrak is going to put money into improving the station. They certainly should be doing it in partnership with the city and with Union Pacific. We know the tribes have an interest, we know the IMers have an interest. So as I understand, the, the city isn't planning because we've been waiting for a planning grant forever. But I'm an enthusiastic yes to. Not taking advantage of the railroad, not taking advantage of the federal government. But they have a major remediation project that is an opportunity for the city. To clean up the past and have a far more environmentally benign future. So I hope we, when you said October, does that mean October, two months away?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a quick open close.
So I, you know, Mr. Mayor, it's the same old staffing problem, but I really wish we would try.
I think our city clerk might know somebody that knows a lot about grants.
Well, I, I think the consensus is, is we'd like more information.
Yeah, we'd like more information, it's really intriguing, uh, but too early to get our hopes up.
Take me down shop.
It's information only, but don't believe we need to.
Yeah. Just if you want to, doesn't hurt.
It would be plenty of time for public comment.
Well, yeah, so I.
We'll bring it back with potential.
Yeah, so I appreciate the comments, I can go forward with that. I'll keep trying to move it forward, um, gauging from this interest, but we'll definitely bring it back for more discussion. And I do, there's been some very, very preliminary hearings that UP. You know, is definitely not going to stop this.
Cool. Thank you.
Well, we'll definitely revisit any number of ways in which Union Pacific and the city interact, the common theme, you'll find us. City. So we move forward into future agenda items.
I have a future agenda item, so, uh. We have two different planning grants that Rico's working on right now, which is the Senate Bill Two Funding and the LEAP, which is local early action program. Which are both, uh, per capita grants, no match for housing production and I know we've approved those activities. And he's doing those right now, I believe it's an update of our housing element as well as a couple of other items, I think in the safety element for wildfire compliance, things like that, fun stuff. So the state has released the new programming, there is no more SB two, there is no more LEAP, they have now combined it into one granting program called REEP. Which was before the county program, which is regional early action program, and now it's two point O. And so it's no longer a per capita, it's now a competitive grant. But, uh, they have sectioned off a rural tribal application that's due in December of this year and it's a no-match grant, from my understanding. And the eligible activities are fascinating, it can apply for a lot of different things this time. So I'd like to bring back an item at the next meeting and work with the city manager and the finance director. To put together a couple of options for the city council to consider for that grant. Because not only can it go to housing, it can go to transit improvement, it can go to. Active transportation, roadway pricing, feasibility studies, VMT impact fee feasibility studies, it's, it's like seven pages of eligible projects, it's very interesting. And so it's due in December, it's a huge opportunity for us, even if it is competitive. So if it's okay with council, I'd like to work on that with the staff to identify a couple of projects for us to consider, to put that application together. And so the minimum award is a hundred thousand dollars, the maximum award is five million. And the grant, uh, has to be encumbered by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six. So it's a, it's a big long timeline, that's really good for us, that means, um, our planning documents will be updated prior to that. Because our housing elements do by next February. And we're all rushing to get that done. But it, it's a great grant opportunity for us to take a look at, we do not have any VMT calculations yet, which is vehicle miles per traveled. Which is the new measure for transportation now, as opposed to level of service, no one cares about congestion anymore in California, everybody cares about how many vehicle miles you drive. Um, and so that is a big opportunity for us to come into compliance, because I can't remember if Rico's working on that one for us as well as part of the SB two in LEAP. And so, um, it's a huge opportunity, the housing portion of it too, is for land acquisition, construction of housing. Funding, uh, different pieces and the other fun thing about it is, it can go to ten percent moderate income and not just low income. And it can go for mixed income development.
Which makes it feasible financially.
It's, it's a huge program, um, I'm very excited about it, um, in terms of why Rico and coming up for programs for them. But I think it's a good opportunity for us as well to put something together, so I think it would be good for us at the next meeting too, since we're talking about this other grant. Um, I can send you guys over some information and at least bring back a couple of ideas that we can start looking into, um, to put that application together, so that's not done at the last minute. To put that application together, so that's not done at the last minute. The state really likes to issue grants that are due at the holiday season, which makes it extra stressful. Um, but it, we have a good lead time on this and we could do some pretty neat stuff with it.
What, didn't we have an active transportation grant? Is that in play right now?
Yep, yeah, current.
Yeah, we have a contractor who's going to be coming in and doing that.
Okay.
And that's being managed by, what did they rename themselves?
Civic well.
Okay, that's what it was. It used to be the local government.
With the active, with that planning, is there um, uh. Community outreach component to it?
Definitely, yep.
Okay, because I just want to make sure I'm tuned into that, since I'm also on the LTC. I'd like to make sure I understand what's going on.
And then there's.
Yep, fantastic.
A number of other items that are set to come back to council. But we'll probably be keeping the agenda focused and straightforward as Dustin's first few meetings. And we will be scheduling a Brown Act training day at some point in the next month. For all council and county commissioners.
That's a good idea.
Do we ever? Well, I just, uh, my concern for all the hard work we put into finance committee creation. It has fallen back to our battles ways. And I know Blake had plenty to do, but we haven't closed out. From audit to the report to where we are in the budget for the first cycle. We make that a point.
Yes, and then um. Bring it back in a primary, but we do intend now you guys in to begin having closed sessions for performance review and goals and visiting our workshops. Those discussed in the past.
So did, off the wall. Except I noticed a few things rather than telling. Did we ever put a cap on the Airbnb's?
No.
No, we never did.
No.
I get, well, the, the one slight cap is you can only have two in a residential district. So one entity, person can have two total.
Actually, there's a number of other restrictions, but um, our intention was to revisit it a year from when it came to the full. Uh, no, the April.
Next year, yeah.
We were January, but then we extended it to April because of.
Okay.
Issues going training.
Just out of curiosity, what's the number of Airbnb's?
It's actually, as I understood, but as I understood it, there's no item right now.
This is discussion, it's got future agenda. Yeah.
Um, it's roughly sixty five at the moment.
Thank you.
Fifty five of them?
Sixty five.
I thought it was a lot less.
Is that still including, like when we did the thing, is that still including like the seven units of the Mossbury?
No. It doesn't include any standard hotels.
And again, if you guys have comments, you can email staff between meetings.
What we were talking about this future and I. Now I know I'm not for making our future, but I'm not, as I said in the year, just curious to see what's going to be.
Yeah, there's a lot to look into, start out the programs work. We'll probably have something in place.
That's something you probably have no experience dealing with, uh, flight of Airbnb's destroying the inner part of your city.
It'll be nice. They do generate revenue. It is, it is a two, it's a two sided talk, but motion to adjourn.
Second, third.
So adjourn.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. To the party.